I call to order the town council regular session. The time is 7:34 and the date is Tuesday, May 27th. If you could please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dale, could we please have the roll call?
Council President Whaley.
Here.
Council Vice President McAtee.
Here.
Councilwoman Healy.
Here.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
All members present, Councilman Donnelly is absent.
And I just want to state that Councilman Paul Donnelly did call me tonight and he is not feeling well, so. Moving on, we have the approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We have the work session of May 12th, 2014.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries, and we have the regular session of May 12th, 2014.
I move approval of those minutes. Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Would any council like anything removed from the consent agenda?
Hearing none, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda?
I have a question on several items on the consent agenda.
Is now the appropriate time to ask the questions?
I was up before you voted.
Please. You could state your name for the record, please.
H.R. Whaley.
Thank you.
Letter E. I don't understand why you wouldn't discuss that and not put it on file but approve it.
Is that Communications E. or New Business E.?
Is that the one on the master lever?
Right.
Oh.
Yeah, it's page three.
I don't know why anyone would not support that other than certain members of the party in power.
We have had this before us with several of the towns and it was the choice of this town council with a vote with more than three to not accept putting that on file, but we appreciate your comments.
Do you know that the Senate bill did not come out of committee?
I didn't know that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any desire for this town council to bring that back later on or to bring that at a future town council meeting to support the doing away with the master lever?
You know what, I'd first like to investigate even more based on what Mr. Whaley said in terms of what we have received from correspondence, because I know we've put things on file and this has been an issue that's been addressed both positively and negatively in terms of what a consensus should be, so I think we should look at that and we will.
Do you want it discussed at the next meeting, is that, or do you want to bring it back for discussion later on? Joe Plaza.
We can bring it back at the next meeting, you want to do that? That's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, Dale will bring that back for further discussion at the next meeting. Thank you. Okay, which brings us to licenses. This is a resolution granting a Victorlin license to Sweet Altheas for our 6A Main Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island. The application is by Kim Curtis, it's 25 Tamanico Drive in Charleston, and it is new and continued from May 12th, 2014. Kim?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And welcome to your two children, it looks like Burger King?
Yes, can you tell?
Burger King, we love it. We got a smile out of them.
Yeah.
Please tell us a little bit about Altheas, Sweet Altheas.
We are a custom cake design company and coffee house on Main Street and we're looking for our Victorlin license.
Could you tell us the hours?
7:00 AM to 6:00 PM as of right now. We're looking to go to 10:00 PM on the weekends, Friday and Saturday nights.
Okay. That's good. Questions here from the town council. Carol?
What will you be serving besides, well, tell us what you're serving, all of it?
Well, we do coffee, Dave's Coffee, so all of his espresso lattes and those iced coffees, juice waters, and food would be cakes, cupcakes.
Nice. Very good.
Yeah.
Very nice. Other questions? Mr. O'Neil?
Are you next to Melgy's?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Working in concert with him or a little bit of competitiveness or?
No, no, not at all. No, we're more desserts.
Okay, okay.
Did you get any help with those little bakers sitting in the seats?
They're in training, but soon.
I love it. Other questions here at the town council table? Seeing none, can we have motion, please?
I move approval of new license A.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries, and we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Next one is a public hearing that we are going to continue until June 23rd, so Public Hearing A, can we have a motion to continue?
I move that we continue Public Hearing A until June 23rd.
Steve?
I would just ask that you open the public hearing first.
Okay.
And then continue it to the meeting on the 23rd.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing in reference to the Chop House Grill and I'm not going to read through it. It has, we have been asked to continue this until June 23rd.
And I make a motion to continue it till June 23rd.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
Just for the record, the necessity for the continuation is based on the fact that for the expansion of the liquor service area, there's a necessity for a special use permit. The first review by the zoning board of review asked to continue that matter to a date which would occur in the month of June but before the 23rd. So there's a necessity for us to continue that public hearing. If there's anyone that's here tonight for that hearing, we wanted to place on the record the reason for the continuance and the fact that it will be June 23rd.
Thank you. Could I have a show of hands if you were here to speak on this public hearing about the Chop House Grill? Okay, so you got the, you understand June 23rd will be, it will be continued, okay.
I think what we should do is to, Jim, what night is the zoning board meeting?
June 18th.
June 18th will be the next session with the zoning board, and that has to conclude its business before the council can consider any action on the request for the expansion of the service area.
Steve and Mike, I guess my question is if they can't be avail, if they're not available on the 18th or the 23rd, should we take any comments today?
No, you've already voted to continue it.
Okay.
And they're not here to give their comments.
Okay, all right.
If they are not available, they are able to provide us with written documentation as to what their concerns or solutions to the concerns that they have, which can be heard both by the zoning board and by the council were to get to that level.
Great, I appreciate that. At least there's available means of communication if they're not available on the 18th or 23rd, okay? Thank you. I don't even, we have a motion in a second, I'm not even sure if we took the vote.
I don't think we did. I don't think we did vote.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 7B. This is a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining citizen views on community development housing needs and program performance relative to filling a PY 2014 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant application. The town is eligible to apply for $25,000 in funds for the purpose of undertaking activities which will result in the following benefits to low and moderate income families and individuals. And it is under these provisions of activities which may include any of the blow consistent with community revitalization plan. Number two is the provision of the improvement of housing opportunities. Three is the provision of employment opportunities. Four is the provision of community facility improvements. And five is the provision of services. So the public hearing is now opened and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Alfred.
The town has participated in the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program since 1985. Over that period of 29 years, we've seen about $4.8 million through that program, a major portion of which has been used for housing rehabilitation or for direct assistance to agencies providing services for low and moderate income individuals. The process required is for the council to conduct two public hearings. This is the first of those two public hearings. Tonight is an opportunity to provide specific notice of the availability of the town accepting applications for participation in the program and that they can cooperate and get assistance through the planning department. We have sent out applications to, or notices of interest to 25 different agencies, many of which have participated and received funding through this program in prior years. Once those applications are received, and the deadline for receipt would be June 2nd of 2014, it would then come back to the council on June 23rd for the second public hearing where the council would establish the priorities to fit within the maximum funding level of $250,000. I'd note for the record that in prior years, we've been able to write applications in an amount larger than $250,000. Back two years ago, it was up to $500,000, it's gone to $300,000, it's now at $250,000. There have been changes that have been made in the program. The state takes in approximately $5 million of that amount, they're setting aside 35% this year. That 35%, 10% will go for homeless programs where there can be direct applications by agencies providing for the homeless directly to the state. And secondly, affordable housing will have a 25% set aside. Agencies providing affordable housing activities or programs would also have the ability to apply directly to the state rather than going through a host community. For that reason, they've reduced the available pool of dollars that'll be available for community applications down to that $250,000 level. We're here tonight also if there are agency representatives here or members of the general public that would like to give advice as to different uses that they believe should be accommodated in the overall program as we go forward to the meeting on the 23rd. So with that, I'd suggest that the council either open the floor to discussion off these questions from the council. I'd be glad to answer those at this time.
First of all, we're going to start here. Are there any questions here at the town council table? Any recommendations? I have a few. In looking at this, Steve, and the criteria with the five questions, the question that jumps out to me and I go back to town council mem, town council meetings probably about a month, well during the budget cycle when Donna came forward with the painting of the high school. Are schools able to apply for some of this and could it be maybe some of the painting at the high school? Is this a possibility?
No, this is more directly, I will not say that it can't be applied for. I'm not sure that it would meet the program targets, because the program targets is really to provide for specific and direct assistance to low and moderate income. If in fact there's a general population enhancement as a result of the dollars expended, I don't think that it would see a high priority.
Okay, I just looked at, you know, the first one with community revitalization, you know, and then community facilities improvement, so I was hoping we could have got something in there?
We can attempt to, but understand that the council can establish priorities, the state can reprioritize what the council suggests.
Right.
We have in the past applied for agency support for the seniors program and we will probably continue to do that because that seniors program does target low and moderate income individuals and provides direct services to that target group. But we would really have to identify how we were relating any type of a painting program specifically to the benefit of the low and moderate, other than us providing employment opportunities for low and moderate income to be able to participate in the actual painting of the facility.
The second question that I had, seeing, and I really think that this is a need in our community, is housing for people with disabilities, and I didn't know if there was an agency in town that could apply for this to try to, you know, open it up for housing for people with disabilities. Right now, the only, it used to be Indian Run and people are grandfathered in, that is no longer acceptable, I believe. It's only the Peacedale House, Peacedale Estates in back of the Peacedale House, that is the only openings for anyone for, with disabilities. So I didn't know if there was, if anything pops into your head that maybe somebody could apply?
If Peacedale Estates is already providing that type of assistance, if they've got land available, they certainly could look at expanding the opportunities that are currently there. We certainly could approach them and ask if there's interest in the planning department could assist them in terms of initiating a statement. I'm not sure that they would be able to, as an agency, move that quickly to be able to have the application in by June 2nd if they hadn't initiated that process already, because we had sent out notices to the various agencies back on April 30th.
Okay, I just know that that's a need and it's probably not something that can come to fruition, but maybe in future years. It's, there used to be many more senior housings available for people with disabilities and that has all changed. So with that said, any other comments before we turn it to the public? Okay, the mic is open if anyone would like to come and comment for any possibility for funds for community design block grants that the town or the agencies will apply for. Anybody see a need in the community? Seeing none.
I just have one question.
Carol, please.
Steve, what is C, in fiscal year 2006, it's CHLT capacity building, what does that stand for, CHLT? I never know these.
Is that the Charleston, the food pantry? No? Land Trust?
That's the Community Housing Land Trust and they have provided template documents, legal documents relative to affordable housing initiatives. So that was, I think, may have been the first year that they received a small stipend under our grant application.
Right.
Seeing there's no comment from the public, we will, can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, and there is no motions there. Which brings us to the next thing.
What I'd ask you to do is to pass a resolution of the council, it's presented on the memorandum from the senior planner.
I move that we as the town council direct staff to prepare the 2014 CB, CDBG application to undertake eligible activities in a grant amount not to exceed $250,000. Further, to authorize the town clerk to order for advertisement, a public hearing relative to filing the 2014 Small Cities CDBG application to be held on June 23rd, 2014, for the purposes of reviewing the draft application and obtaining citizen views on the proposed activities.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider proposed amendments to the town code, Chapter 19, Utilities, Article 3, Water Supply Division 9, Fees, Charges, and Rate Schedule as shown on Exhibit 1 attached here too. And if the public would like to turn to Exhibit 1, turn it over to Steve.
This public hearing is a request and recommendation for amendment of the town code as it relates to billing practices for the South Shore and Middle Bridge water systems. The Rhode Island General Law's 45-39.1-5 specifically requires the town to begin quarterly billing as of December of 2013. Prior to this time, we had sent out semi-annual billing in the month of September. What we're going to be required to do now is to send out a quarterly bill which will charge individuals for the prior three months of excess water use as well as a base fee. All those changes are contained in Chapter 19 of the town code that's presented as the Exhibit, Exhibit 1. This does not change the rate structure, which will be discussed with the informational hearing which will follow. This will simply provide us with compliance with general law to be able to commence a quarterly billing. I would also note that since the inception of the water system, all water accounts have been built on the annual basis in the month of September with two annual installments. The existing water billing provides for a post-year invoicing for excess water use. Based on the quarterly billing practices that need to be instituted, we've got a year worth of excess that normally be billed in September of 2014 that needs to be billed in advance of the October, the first October bill, which is, which will be issued under this new billing system. That means that what we will be doing is having an excess water bill that will be, go out for the period of July 1st, 2013 through June 30th of 2014 for all water volume that's been used by each and every customer in excess of 5,000 cubic feet, which is included in their base minimum. We anticipate that the total billing for that July payment requirement will be approximately That will be at the existing year's billing rates. It will not be affected by any rate increases that the council were to enact this evening. So it will be at the $2.91 per 100 cubic feet for all use in excess of 5,000 cubic feet gross for the year. Does not look at quarters at all. That's the action that would be affected if in fact the amendments as presented on Exhibit 1 are adopted by the council as presented. Is there any questions? I'd be glad to address them.
Any questions here for Mr. Alfred?
Steve, so this year's billing ends when? September for the past year?
The, we have issued, the bill that was issued in September of 2013 was for the 12 months that would end on June 30th of 2014.
June 30th, okay.
The excess water use traditionally would be billed in the 2014-15 year. Because we're going to now bill just on the three months prior, so what's going to happen is you'll get a bill in July if you're on either the South Shore or Middle Bridge system for any excess water use. 64% of our customers are below 5,000 cubic feet, so there's not a great deal of customers that will be receiving that excess bill in July. It'll be due and payable by August 15th, I believe is the billing date.
Right, but I guess I'm not understanding if the prior water bill was till June 30th, so you're going to send out a new water bill in July, is it just going to be for a few weeks or is?
I'm sending out a bill in July which will be for the excess that was used between July 1st of 2013 and June 30th of 2014.
Okay.
So it's for the 13-14 year.
Mm-hmm.
It customarily had been billed in September.
Right.
In, when we send out the bills.
Yeah.
But now what we're going to do is when we send out the bill on October, in October of this year, it will include the base fee and it will include any excess that the customers used over 1,250 cubic feet.
So that would be from July, June 30th to October?
That'll be from July 1st through September 30th.
Okay.
So any water that they use between July 1st and September 30th will be on the first quarterly billing that they receive if it's in excess of 1,250 cubic feet. But because we haven't billed yet for the 13-14 years use, we need to get that bill out. We will get that bill out and it'll be at the current 13-14 year billing rate of $2.91 per 100 cubic feet of water use in excess of the 5,000 cubic feet.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions here at the table? Seeing none, I'm going to open the mic for any questions from the public in reference to the water billing. Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second. Last call for anyone to speak. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, the public hearing is closed. And we'll wait for any motions, Steve, when we go to New Business, Item D, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so next we're going to open a public informational hearing regarding a new water utility rate schedule proposed for the South Shore and Middle Bridge water customers. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Alfred.
The second part of dealing with the water fund for the 2014-15 year and the budget that was adopted as a part of the town's general budget program for the 14-15 year is to establish a new rate structure. The rate structure, we've dealt with the quarterly billing, but in addition statutory requirements that have been implemented, there's rules and procedures governing water use and efficiency for major water suppliers. That was enacted in 2011. And what that does is it encourages all public water suppliers to implement water conservation incentives with the introduction of what they call inclined rate structures. In other words, the more water that a customer uses, the more the customer is going to pay for that use. The purpose of the inclined structure is for the users to conserve water because they're going to want to use less if they can reduce their bill. This will address some of the uses of water that are excessive, particularly those that pertain to irrigation on private properties that use huge volumes of water that are then put back into the groundwater. The proposed rate structure was presented at the time that the budget was developed and essentially it establishes a base rate adjustment. Base rate adjustment will go from $178 a year to $192 a year, about a 7.9% increase. Additional units, these would be where there's one line going into a property and there's multiple units, let's say Mary Carpenter's or Roy Carpenter's, would go from $77 per additional unit up to $88, or a $11 increase. We will also change the methodology in terms of measurement of water use and how to bill for excess water use. In the current billing methodology, a customer is provided with 5,000 cubic feet of water use over the course of a 12-month period. We will continue to provide the 5,000 cubic feet of volume per customer, but it will be divided into the four quarters. Therefore, for each quarter, the base rate of $48 per month, which gets you to the $192, the base rate will be $48 and you'll get 1,250 cubic feet of water for that purpose. Any uses in excess of that 1,250 cubic feet would be billed at an excess water rate. The proposed rate is that for any water use in excess of 1,250 cubic feet in any given quarter between 1,251 cubic feet and 2,500 cubic feet, they would be billed out at a rate of $3.25 per 100 cubic feet. For any uses in excess of the 2,500 cubic feet in that quarter, they would be billed at $3.75 per 100 cubic feet of water use. would be billed at three dollars and seventy-five cents per hundred cubic feet of water use. That way, what we're doing is we're saying, you're still going to be able to have the five thousand cubic feet. If you're using it on a twelve hundred and fifty cubic foot base, you're not going to pay more than the base fee. If you're going to use more than the twelve hundred and fifty cubic feet in any quarter, then you're going to pay at an excess rate as a means of providing a conservation incentive. Quarterly billing provides an opportunity for somebody to see, well, what did I really use over those prior three months and what did it cost me? And is that rate tolerable for the next quarter? If the rate is too high for that person, they then have to look at, well, what do I do different to be able to reduce that water bill? The quarterly billing system is seen as a means of providing people with an opportunity to make conservation corrections and in the long run be able to provide for what, let less water use within the systems. Conservation billing is also in place with the United Water System and it's also in place in Narragansett Water System. Most water systems have developed a phased approach into billing for excess rate. The town hired a rate consultant to review both the needs of our water system and how to structure the water rate to be able to produce the necessary revenues to meet what our operational and capital costs are for the operation of the South Shore system. When we prepared the budget document for the council's consideration, we showed a budget, I believe it was a million fifty-seven thousand dollars in expenditures. We also were showing that the rate base would bring in about eight hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, if I recall. The, what we're looking at is that were we going to need all of that revenue? And I said that I wanted to take the time to be able to review, one, what United Water was going to do as far as what the PUC rate increase that was going to be granted. Secondly, I wanted to look at what the necessity of installing a disinfection system in the South Shore water system, if it was, A, going to be necessary and B, if it was necessary, at what cost? We looked at, when we prepared the budget, we had anticipated a thirty percent rate increase for the wholesale water that we purchased from United Water. The rate actually approved by the PUC came in at thirty-two point eight percent. We estimate that by purchasing the same amount of water next year as we purchased in the current year, we would have to incur a cost of an additional fifty thousand dollars. So our, the cost to stand still would increase by fifty thousand. Secondly, we looked at our capital budget, which was going to be up about twenty thousand dollars more than normal to be able to deal with the cost of installing necessary equipment for chlorine residual, for increasing the chlorine residual within the far ends, the Green Hill end of the water system. And that was, cost came in at about eighty thousand dollars. So we're about twenty thousand dollars over what we had anticipated with budget there. The last and major problem that was not anticipated at the time budget was developed is that we've received two notices within the past three weeks from T-Mobile indicating that they plan on removing their cellular leases from the two water tanks, the one at South Shore and the one at, one in Mortucket and the one at Sukittash. That's going to mean a loss of what had been anticipated in revenue of sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. So when I look at it overall, we're looking at a cost to stand still of somewhere in the area of around a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. The overall rate increase that will occur as a result of implementing the rate structure as presented by the consultant will generate about a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars more than if there's no rate change in our billing system. That's about a sixteen point nine percent increase. I don't see any other choice at this point to be able to keep that system solvent for both South Shore and for Middle Bridge. I've provided the council with detailed information on what the impact is of the conservation billing for different water volume users. There is no one size fits all because if someone uses all of the water, let's say that we have a seasonal customer who is only here for the months of July, August, and September to use for, let's say, that third quarter. If they used all of the five thousand cubic feet of water in that three-month period, they're going to be billed for excess over twelve hundred and fifty cubic feet. Last year, they weren't billed for any excess because they were still using five thousand cubic feet. Now, with the conservation incentive in place, they will see an increase from the base rate. Yet, my opinion would be that they should be paying more if, in fact, they're going to tax the system during a high use period. Fourth of July week, weekend on a daily basis, we will be using between one point two and one point three million gallons in use based on the demands that'll be on that system. When we get into the months of January and February, our water use will be a fraction of that. But we still have to have the capacity in place, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, to be able to provide that type of water, to meet that type of water demand as well as to meet the demand associated with fire protection. So we need to be able to provide a differential rate, one, for conservation purposes, but two, more importantly, to provide greater equity in how people pay for the cost of the water, for the value of the water that they're using. I can go through any number of examples that the council may have. I don't think that that's productive. The, there's a sensitivity analysis that was included in the information that I've provided to the council and to the public, which shows different types of user groups from seasonals to year rounds and with different volume uses. We can get reductions in the amount of water demanded and used if, in fact, conservation billing practices are employed as recommended by the consultant and by staff. I'd be glad to answer any specific questions the council or the public may have. As far as the rate increases that are proposed, I would note that the public can look at the agenda on pages, if I can find my agenda, on Exhibit Two, which shows the different rates. And just in looking at those rates, again, what we're looking at is going to the quarterly. So we're currently on an annual system. Forty-eight multiplied times four would give you the hundred and ninety-two dollar figure that I previously mentioned, which would be in the base rate. There are very few meters that are outside of the five eighths other than for restaurants or for trailer parks or for the marine operations. Probably over ninety-five percent are at the five eighths. So we'll be looking at the twelve hundred and fifty cubic feet and the base rate of the forty-eight, the forty-eight dollars. When we look at the minimum right now, the minimum is increasing for excess use from a year round at five thousand cubic feet to the twelve hundred and fifty per quarter. Between twelve hundred and fifty-one and twenty-five hundred, it'll be three dollars and twenty-five cents versus the two dollars and ninety-one cents that's currently being charged. Anything above the twenty-five hundred and one will be at the three seventy-five. Those are the rates that we're asking council to consider this evening. We're also, for comprehensive purposes, we're showing what the rates would be on fire and fire protection for public and private hydrant rentals. There's only two hydrants that are actually in place for the private purposes and the public ones are on major properties such as the Theta by the Sea or Roy Carpenter's. So there's very few dollars, I think there's about eighteen hundred dollars in revenue that comes in from there. All of our revenue really for this system comes through the residential base or that handful of commercial activities that are spread through the South Shore or Middle Bridge area. With that, I'd ask if there's any questions I can answer directly.
Any questions here at the town council table? Carol?
Steve, the twelve, the one thousand two hundred and fifty cubic feet per quarter, is there any way of knowing how many people actually go over that in the summer months? Do we have any evidence as to, I know we, the way we've been billing in the past, you have to go over the five thousand before you incur the extra cost. With this new billing in that...
That's the sensitivity analysis that you can look at.
Mm-hmm.
The sensitivity analysis gives you estimated number of customers on a quarterly basis. So when you look at, starting on page, page seven.
Yep.
Of the rate study, what you'll see is what a typical year-round customer is using. And that's about thirty-five hundred cubic feet is the first example. The second example is a hundred and seventy-five customers and so forth.
Which one is the summer months of, say, that typical year-round resident? Is it the third quarter? Is that the summer month?
A typical year-round was, you're talking about, if you go to the next page, page eight, they're showing you year-round with high consumption customers. You've only got twenty-five of them that are using ten thousand cubic feet. You've got ten of them that are using twelve thousand, five hundred cubic feet, and you can see that most of the uses is going to be in the third and the fourth quarters in both cases. You had sixteen thousand cubic feet. As I mentioned in the pre-session, there's a number of atypical users as well. We've got some residential users that are over thirty thousand cubic feet. Some of those are just directly related to in-ground irrigation systems that are being used, that are using public water supply for that purpose. Some of our restaurants would be using, as shown in the rate study, you know, over ninety thousand cubic feet in the course of the year. And obviously, their biggest months of operation would be in the third and the fourth quarters. So there's a, you know, there certainly is a great deal of use during the summer and there will be substantial amount of the excess that will be collected in those two quarters and certainly less in the January through March or the October through November, through December. But there's nothing that I can give you that would be atypical. And that's why what I tried to do is to give you gradations of five thousand, ten thousand, and twenty thousand to show you what the differences are. Essentially, somebody using, somebody using twenty thousand cubic feet as a year-round customer, their bill, their bill could go from what's in today's rate, six hundred and twenty-three dollars, up to about seven hundred and thirty. That's if they're using, you know, five thousand cubic feet each and every quarter. That would be a year-round at that. If you had a, you know, a year-round that was using ten thousand, which is still a high number for a residential use, five thousand cubic feet, as I say, when you look at our rate base, if you took five thousand for the year, sixty-two percent of our customers were using less than the five thousand. In fact, we had three hundred and twenty-eight customers using less than a thousand cubic feet. You had another four hundred and thirty-two using less than two thousand. So you can see that a great deal of our water use is very small. You're going to have, the outliers are going to be there, but those, and those outliers are going to be the ones that pick up the excess. Do I think that we're going to see a sizable and major increase for the seasonal users? Yes, yes, we will. But the objective is to look for the conservation and it's also to provide a better equitability in terms of them taking the water at the most difficult time to generate the water and to maintain the water tanks. You know, recognize that if we're using one point two million gallons during that Fourth of July week, you've only got eight hundred thousand gallons in the air with the two water tanks, four hundred at, in each of those tanks. If you have a fire during that high use period, you're going to have difficulty. So what we have to try to do is to get people to understand that this is a limited commodity and that it needs to be treated as such and that by giving it at a very cheap rate, there's no necessity to conserve.
No, I think we can all agree we have to conserve water. I mean, it's like gold in the future. It will be even more so. So we owe it to the generations to come and to ourselves to conserve.
Other questions here at the town council table? Jim?
Yeah, obviously, we're heading in the direction of higher costs and more conservation demands on all of us. Steve, just a quick question here. The Public Utilities Commission and the Water Resources Board, what evidence do they have of the aquifer drawdowns?
We don't agree with the analysis and the methodology that's been used by DEM and Water Resources Board in terms of looking at what stream flow volumes are. And in fact, it's something that we will be, we've invited all of the different water users, public water users, to a meeting in South Kingston to address concerns for South, for the Washington County area. And it may be a case that we look to those water systems and ask whether or not we regionally hire a consultant to evaluate the studies that have been done through, through the DEM. I don't want to get John Shark started, but he thinks it's worse than TMDLs.
No.
You know, the real problem that we're going to have is that if no action's taken to challenge the documentation that DEM is using, we would be potentially required in future times to be able to reduce the amount of water that we could actually sell.
Yep.
There's a number of questions that need to be addressed, agricultural uses, public service, water system uses, and what is a reasonable extraction rate for the area and who's going to get allocation of that, of what can be extracted from the aquifer in a safe manner? So I would say to you, we don't have the answers on that now, but, you know, I've got, Michael is involved with it as well in terms of reviewing the documentation and will most likely be back to all of the different town councils in the near future to talk about the need for possibly a summit on how that issue's going to pan out.
In Part Two, I just wanted to know, is Big River still on the drawing board to be the situat reservoir for the southern part of Rhode Island?
I don't believe so. I believe that they, no, I believe that right now they've already started using that property for other purposes.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, the only question that I had is this sample water bill that you gave us, is this going to be also online so that the public can look at it?
Yes.
I think this was very helpful.
We can have that available. That's the water bill that we've just created with the new billing system. So that's the way it's going to look.
And I think that would be helpful for the public to look at.
Yeah, there'll be a different bill that'll be used for the excess billing that goes out in July, but that will be the billing that they will see every quarter there forward.
Thank you. And the other thing that I would just like to comment is I appreciate the thirty-three-page document that you put together for the town council and I really hope that the public takes the advantage and looks at that online if you are connected to, you know, the public water system. Not, does not affect those that have their own wells. So with that said, I'm going to open it up to the public if they have any comments with this public informational hearing in regard to the new water utility rate schedule. So the microphone is open. Seeing none, last, any last comments here at the table? Carol?
Steve, I just wanted to point out that you told, you mentioned it at the work session that most of the residents are under United Water is, or a large majority of the residents in South Kingston.
In South Kingston, there is four major water systems. The United Water System, which services most of Wake, all of Wakefield and portions in, off of South Road. Then there's a small water system, it's Kingston Water System. Then there's the Middle Bridge Water System and the South Shore Water Systems. And then the rest of the... And then the rest of the town is on private wells. United is the largest water provider in South Kingston for a public water system.
Thank you.
Okay, can we have a motion, please, to close the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Actually, public informational hearing.
Public informational hearing.
Motion, and, second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. This public informational hearing is closed, and when we have a public informational hearing, there are no motions. But I'd like you to all move to new business item D at this time.
And Ella, if I could just interrupt, because before we vote on business item D, could we have a motion to approve the amendments to the town code establishing the quarterly billing system as set forth in exhibit one attached to the agenda?
Moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And for the public's reference, we are now on page five, new business item D. This is a resolution establishing the water user rate schedule for fiscal year 2014-15 as shown on exhibit two attached here, too, and amending the town's schedule of fees as further described in a memorandum from the town manager to the Town Council dated May 21, 2014, entitled Fiscal Year 2014-15: Water Use Fee Rate Structure and Water Supply Ordinance Amendments. Can we have a motion, please?
I move approval of new business item D.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, 400. Which now brings us back to page three, communications. We have a communication adopted by the Warrentown Council in support of joint Senate and House Resolution 2014, House 7896, and Senate 2397 to approve and publish and submit to the electors a proposition of amendments to the Constitution, right to an adequate education for the consideration by the voters of the general election in November as received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs.
We discussed this at the work session, and I move that we place this communication on file.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Communication B is a resolution adopted May 12, 2014, by the Charles Towne Town Council in support of 2014 House 7178 and Senate 2314 Acts Relating to Health and Safety, Plastic Waste Reduction that would establish a plan for the gradual ban on the use of disposable plastic checkout bags by retail establishments received and placed on file, and the Town Council further directs.
We've had the same communication before as before, and we have sent all of, sent this to our Conservation Committee, and we're still waiting to hear back from them. So I would move that we place this communication on file until we hear from the Conservation Commission.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Which brings us to comments from interested citizens. And I just have a few comments before we open it to the public. I just want to thank Rachel Cloud for the breakfast at the Bolin Alley to honor Gold Star family. Money was raised to send children to a camp that have lost an immediate family member in the war. It's called Camp Corral. And on that morning at the breakfast, we honored Alfred G. Kircher, the father of Cheryl Barbera, who's a Gold Star daughter. And we're grateful for the money that has been raised for that. I also want to mention another Gold Star family that I mentioned at the Memorial Day Parade. That is the son-in-law of Shelley and Bob Kolbe, who lost their son, I believe it was on May 1, 2013, Michael Simpson. So our hearts are open and go out to both of those families. I also want to thank the Elks for their presentation after the parade, and I want to thank the Parade Committee. I think this was one of the most outstanding parades that we've had. Thank you, Terry, Steve Stewart, all of the Parade Committee, Joe Tigerpatrick. It was absolutely phenomenal. And the amount of respect and just heartwarming thoughts that were sent to those that have fallen during the ceremonies in Sagetucket Park. It truly spoke volumes. So thank you to all that made that possible. I also want to let the public know that the Girl Scout bridging will take place on June 6. So we're looking for any Town Council member that can attend. I will not be able to attend, so if somebody could be on that platform and give that speech that night, that would be great. And South Kingston High School graduation is June 16. For those of you that would like to get that on their calendar. And does anybody else have any other comments of things that they attended? Do you want to talk about the opening of the bank? Carol?
Absolutely. I'm going to go in sequence. We had a lot going on last week. On Tuesday, May 20, Jim and Meg and I attended the opening of the new 210 Oyster Bar and Grill. We wished them much success. We also went to the ribbon-cutting on Friday, May 23, for the new Bank Rhode Island in downtown Wakefield. Jim, Meg, and myself also attended that, and was a very successful event, beautiful new building. I think it adds a lot to downtown Wakefield, and I wish them the best of luck. I also agree with Ella, the parade, the breakfast, all of it went off very well. I'd also like to say that the Mattie race, I think everything, the whole day went well, all parts worked together, and I'd like to say thank you to everyone for a very successful Memorial Day.
And if I could add just one thing?
Please.
I wanted to say thank you to South County Hospital for an absolutely wonderful evening with a reception and an open house hosted also with the Chamber of Commerce for a business after hours. They were very, very graceful. There was a very nice turnout. They did a beautiful job. So it's been a busy week. We've been at a lot of events, and I can only say I'm extremely proud to embrace the community for the things that collectively everybody has done, because it's just been awesome.
And then Jim?
Yeah, just to follow up with Meg and Carol, the week started, South County Hospital, which, as everyone knows, major employer, huge payroll in town, and they were certainly trying to comfort us with the potential merger with, I believe it's the South Coast folks. I think they're going to work very hard at keeping specialties here, keep their employees working, and to make sure that this community does not lose what this wonderful business and what this wonderful hospital has meant to this community. What I did find out that night, they have way in excess of their expectations for those folks who have come over from Westerly Hospital. I think that's wonderful to hear, that South County Hospital is receiving many of those. Couple other things, we, the 210 Oyster Bar, really exciting, town property down there, beautiful piece of property, looking down the salt pond. Gosh, we certainly wish them well, and that's after the last four or five years. I think this is really exciting for this community. Bank Rhode Island, I'm specifically pleased with because they could have moved up to, you know, not 138, but 108 down the commercial highway district, but they chose Wakefield because, like, we've worked hard on this council. We're trying to make Wakefield a very, very profit center for business. We're trying to do more pedestrians down here, trying to really get this business-oriented. And that's why they chose to build here, and that really says a lot for what this council has done, what our departments have done here to make Wakefield really, I think, close to a very thriving business community. And then lastly, the road race and the Memorial Day Parade. I've had my office downtown for almost 20 years, and I've never seen so much energy, electricity. It was probably the greatest day that I can remember for this community down there. Both events were phenomenal. The Mattie Day folks had something like 1,000 people participating and signing up. That was unbelievable for the Memorial Day Parade. I've never seen such large crowds. Great reception by everyone, and it was really a fantastic week culminated with the Memorial Day event. So, and also, many thanks to Terry back there, who did such hard work putting this all together. She's shaking her head, but she did a great job. And to all the committees, it was a wonderful day and a wonderful week for South Kingston and Wakefield.
The only other date that I would be remiss if I did not mention is the CRMC hearing on June 10 at 6 o'clock up in Providence in reference to the Mattoonik activities. Seeing that, no more comments, we'll open it to the public. The microphone is open. Please come forward.
Good evening, Cynthia Gleason. Nice to be back again. I guess I just came tonight as a spectator, because last week was, two weeks ago was so raucous and ugly. And I'm pleased to see that the chamber is nearly empty and that you have all handed yourself beautifully tonight. Seems that you can all work together, and there is potential here to move past. So thank you all for that.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Please come to the microphone. Please come.
As I respect former councilwoman's comments, it is good to see that you can work together. But it is important to also note that, as was spoken, what happened was unacceptable, shouldn't be moved past, and let's get on with it because it's unacceptable and it needs to stop, and it won't stop unless a clear message is sent. So again, I'm going to say it, and I'm going to say it repeatedly at every council meeting I can get to, until, Jim, you have to step down, you have to go, because what you did caused great damage to this town. People are still talking about it. It's still a black eye on this town. There may not be as many people sitting here, because we all have lives and we all have to get on with it. But I'm telling you, you must do what's right for this town and step down because it was unacceptable, and you know that.
Please come forward.
Bob Traeger. I've been thinking about this stuff that went on for the last, what is it, six weeks now? I don't, I've lost track of it. But anyway, I wanted to come tonight. I would have rather preferred to watch it on television. And I mean that very, very sincerely, and apparently, it doesn't mean anything to anybody else, but that's okay. Anyway, I'm getting old, and, you know, you get perspective on things as you age. And I think I said at the first session, and I believe, as I rethink it, that I think it was pretty accurate, I don't think anybody was wrong at that meeting. Now, I'm not taking Jim off the hook on making an inappropriate comment, but as far as the rest of it was concerned, the race and all that, and all that it created, I think the Town Council did the best they could with the information they had in front of them. I wasn't at that meeting, but I trust them as people that are trying to do the right thing. And I'm going to just make one more comment. I know some people, a couple of people here won't appreciate it, but at the same time, I think one comment was just made originally here that, well, gee, I see there's not that many people here tonight. Just the regulars. Well, that's not good. See, that's what I don't think is good. That's not what I believe is good at all. I mean, these are, this is a comment that you've heard of. Democracy isn't something that, a spectator sport. Democracy is hard, and you went through a hard six weeks here in this town over a number of things. But the important part of it, from my perspective, is that people had the opportunity to get up in front of you and speak their mind. And I don't think it's done enough. I think we have all kinds of problems around us. If we don't see them, we, I mean, it's, ignorance is bliss. I will admit that. I'm not that smart myself, so I'm glad in a way, because if I knew more than I know, I think I would go crazy with what's going on in the world today, and not only in the world, but in this country. People are starving. People don't have a place to sleep or eat, or the veterans come back, they don't, they can't get a job. Kids are getting out of college with degrees and can't find work. You don't think we've got problems? And water, the thing that was going on here for a half an hour, we could talk about water every week. Water is the big one. We need to conserve water. We need to do more than conserve water. We need to recycle water. We need to, we need to get into all kinds of things with water, just like we do, we need to expand the renewable energy in this country, and we're not doing it. Because this country, the statistic came out, I'll sit down, I'm on a roll now, I guess. The statistic that I heard on the NewsHour today on the CEO salaries in this country ranged 400 times what an average worker makes. In the, I believe, I can't remember the exact figure, but it was multi-multi-millions of dollars a year. No one in this country needs to make that kind of money. They better figure out a way to help all these other problems instead of grabbing more and more and more. And I believe in the system we have, but we have to, this is becoming a problem. It's becoming a major problem. The rich are getting rich, the poor are getting poor. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, Jocelyn?
Jocelyn Luska, South Kingston. Councilwoman Healy, you don't know me, but certainly I have 25 years of making inappropriate comments in front of this Town Council and the school committee in the past. I'm the first one to admit it. It happens. It happens in the heat of the moment. I'm lucky I was traveling professionally over the last four weeks. I think I'm going to ask my boss for more travel. And I'm delighted to come home to find that you've resumed business, because we do have some things that need to be settled. And I'm grateful that you're back at work, that you have settled your affairs. You have gracefully apologized, Jim, thank you. Ella, I'm assuming you've accepted it and settled this matter, and that you're going to continue doing the excellent work that you're doing. Thank you. Good night, and I am going to travel more.
I do have to disagree, Jocelyn. I've never seen you be disrespectful at the microphone. Microphone is open, please come forward.
I'm Rachel Cloud. First of all, I'd just like to thank you, Ella, for your beautiful speech at the memorial. It really was an incredible ceremony. I have told you all before, I was there two years ago when my son was overseas and how hard it was then. I stood there yesterday with Shelley Kolbe, and who lost her son-in-law last May 1. I stood with her and her husband, and it was, it was nice to see them honored, so I do appreciate that. It was beautiful to see Cheryl honored. The breakfast was fantastic. Everyone, it was such a beautiful feeling of community. It really, truly was. Everyone, I've got texts all day from people saying they just couldn't stop-
Everyone that, I've got texts all day from people saying they just couldn't stop smiling from, you know, how honored they were to be a part of it. I had one text today that just said how authentic and sobering it was to be in a room with that level of respect given, yet, just a beautiful feeling of community, so I do appreciate you and Meg both coming out to be a part of that and seeing what it's all about. I could speak, I have heard from a lot of friends and family about the chaos of the road race, getting their Girl Scouts to the parade, and the conflicts that took, but I believe that would be better if I spoke to the parade committee maybe directly about those issues, because truly, I do want to just thank you so much for your speech, and how nice that was to honor our fallen, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? Seeing none, any last comments here, before we move on to town manager's report? Jim?
Yeah, thank you, yeah, I just want to make it clear that I think the newspapers gave most of accounts, but I've got no plans of resigning, nor did I ever, nor will I ever stand up again like I had to and take this kind of lynching and execution that you sent my way. Thank you.
We'll move on to town manager's report.
I think I provided all the information that I need to for this evening, unless there's questions on the two reports that I've issued over the prior two-week period, if not, I'd just yield the floor to the solicitor.
Any questions for Steve? Town solicitor's report.
Yes, just quickly, just to give you an update on Mossfield Road, you know that there's been an issue with one of the properties out there with a lot of old boats and, but a few old boats and vehicles that don't belong there, a lot of debris. I just want to let you know we were successful in court on Friday with the help of our building official Jeff O'Hara, and the judge is entering an order whereby if that mess is not cleaned up by June 6th, the town will be able to go in there and clean it up and then put a lien on the property owner's property, so that one is going to work very successfully.
Did you hear the mic show?
That's been a long time coming, thank you, and thank Jeff, you did a great job on that.
I do want you to know that if, in fact, we do go in and clean that, we would most likely hire a third-party vendor to do the cleaning, and then we would place a lien against the property, so it would not come out of tax dollars, other than us having to front the cost of that for public safety purposes.
Okay, any questions for Michael? Moving on, appointments.
Well, we, I would like to move to reappoint Leslie Castrovalari to the planning board, her term expires this month, May 2014, and that would put her in a three-year term until May 2017.
Second?
We have a second. I just have, a couple of people have brought comments with the attendance, and I know that there have been extenuating situations, I am gonna support this tonight. And, you know, what was brought to my attention was that Doug Langdon with his resignation with 51% of attendance, and Leslie has 54, and I know there was extenuating circumstances in both 48% out of the work sessions, so I'm gonna support it, and if there's any conflict with travel later on, I have all the faith and trust in Leslie as a person that she will tend her resignation if she can't be here, so, full support.
Well, I just want to say, as you know, as you've pointed out, Leslie did have some personal issues that precluded her from attending, and that's been worked out, and she wants to continue to serve, she's been an attorney for 30 years, she's been a resident of South Kingston, as far as I can remember, I think even as a child, she's summered in Mattoonik, she's very involved in the Mattoonik area, she's done a lot of zoning and planning in her legal work, and I think she's a great asset to the planning board.
She's done a great job on that planning board, absolutely, so. Jim?
Yeah, just echo what Carol has said, she has been a long, long-term community member, but most important to me is Chairman Maria Mack, who finds Leslie's services invaluable, and to me, that says it all, so I'm very happy to support this reappointment.
I agree with, I heard from Maria Mack also, who is very much supportive of Leslie's reappointment.
I also heard from Maria Mack, so with the comments. So with that said, we have a motion and a second, we're ready to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is new business. A, this is a resolution authorizing the town manager to enter into and execute a three-year solid waste and recycling services agreement with Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation, 65 Shunpike Johnston, for the disposal of municipal solid waste and recyclables for the period July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2017, and is further described in a memorandum from the public services director to the town manager dated May 9, 2014, and entitled Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation Municipal Solid Waste and Recycling Services Agreement for Fiscal Year 2015 through 2017. Steve?
The town, like all other cities and towns, is required to sign into a contract with Resource Recovery, this is the three-year period, the good news is that for that three-year period, they will continue to maintain the tipping fee at the $32 per ton. In addition to that, there's incentives where we can reduce the cost per ton that's disposed at the state landfill, down to as low as $30 based on us meeting recycling rates, which we will meet, and we've continued to meet, the, I can get it down to about $30. The contract has been reviewed by staff as well as by legal counsel, and all feel that it's ready for signature, and would request council authorization to do so.
Can we have a motion, please?
I move approval of new business item A, 13A.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Any questions for Steve? Seeing none, that was another great packet that we had to read through. All that detailed information.
That was another 20 pages.
Kudos to your staff for putting that together.
You got so much paperwork until last Thursday.
I'm just glad the sun was out today, so that I could sit on the deck and read it. So anyways, we have motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And I believe the last item is F, let's see, what we have, F, this is a resolution authorizing a water bid to Central Dodge Incorporated, 191 New State Highway Rainham, Massachusetts, for one 2014 Dodge Charger V8 police package vehicle, in an amount not to exceed $27,260, including equipment transfer and installation, and is further described in a memorandum from the police chief to the town manager dated May 20, 2014, and entitled Bid Recommendation Police Vehicle Replacement, V412.
As the chief's memo indicates, we're working off of a bid approval back in March of 2013. With the bid to purchase police vehicles, we asked to have an open item where if we lose police vehicles during the course of the year, as long as they have them in stock, that they would hold their prices. We did lose a police vehicle to a, it was totaled based on a fire that occurred, I think some people remember it on Main Street, the, that vehicle was destroyed, we need to replace that at this point. We'll be receiving most of the reimbursement through the, through the insurance trust, our insurance provider, on the replacement value, and additional dollars will be moved around within the police budget to accommodate the $27,000-plus cost, ask council to approve it as presented.
I move approval of new business item F.
Second.
Motion and second, any questions for the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, and I believe that is all that we have for tonight on the agendas, we have a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, and we are...